Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting for the Common Council of the City of Hartford. Prior to this meeting, all proper notices were sent. In addition, I would like to welcome all of our folks, especially our new police officer, our police chief, which is wonderful. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, Lori.
The mayor and all other persons are present?
Can we hear my voice on this? When I turned up, I was told...
They're all...
Oh. You have a force, a unanimous consent agenda.
Approve.
President Haggy, second by Elder Person Turchi.
Motion by Elder Person Haggy, seconded by Elder Person Turchi, approving the following two items. One, the Common Council minutes of May 10th, 2022, and number two, approving of able signs for the purchase and installation of a new sign electronic message center at a total cost of $64,484, with the City of Hartford portion of the project expense approved at $7,242.
Questions, comments? Why just can't, why can't we have Bob Jewell just pay for this?
Different sign.
Yeah, I know. That was, that was humor for the city administrator. So, okay. Any further comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carried. Communications, Lori.
I have one thing this evening, a discussion and consideration of moving the August 9th Common Council meeting to August 16th and the November 8th Common Council meeting to November 15th due to the 2022 fall elections.
You can explain why, says Steve. I know we had talked back and forth, just so...
It's historical that every time, we have an election that we, and a meeting on the same night, we move it simply because in different elections, you can't even be here, and in other times in which Lori can't be here for any of them. So, that's the reason we've always historically moved them.
Vote to approve, Jeff, seconded by Wayne.
Motion by Elder Person Turchi, seconded by Elder Person Rosniak, approving the two Common Council meetings to November, I'm sorry, to August 16th and November 15th.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carried. Okay, we have appearances and citizen comments. I'll read that one. Introduction of Police Officer Craig Binie by Chief of Police McFarland. Chief of Police McFarland, along with the administration of the oath of office by City Clerk Lori Hetzel. And I want to thank the Binies for providing us with an officer, one in, one out. I think that was a phenomenal plan. We might make that an ordinance. So, we have to do that again if you choose to retire, that you have to supply the next officer. I think that was very thoughtful of you. So, thank you very much. Chief?
Thank you, everybody. I've got a little something different tonight for your viewing pleasure. This will be the first officer that we swear in that has his own promotional video, done by Rachel Womag. You'll know Rachel, who used to work with us. She does great videos. She's done some for the city, and she did one specifically for this particular swearing in slash retirement. So, have a look at it, and then I'll introduce our new officer.
You look forward 30 years, that seems like a long ways away, but when you look backwards 31 years, it's a flash.
It's just surreal. That's all I've ever known him is as a cop, you know, and now that this is the last day, it's just a weird feeling.
The first time that he mentioned anything to me about being a police officer was, he was probably about 14, 15 years old. I felt that he would probably pass on that eventually.
So, yeah, you're gonna start Wednesday on day shift.
It was maybe high school when I first realized that this is a job that I wanted to do. It had a lot to do with him, just kind of as a, as a role model.
This is what you're gonna listen for. That one single beat, and then you'll get your speed.
He was the guy I went to for questions. You can always count on him to help out with certain things, and it's gonna be different now that he's not here, you know, because he's the guy I've always looked up for and looked up through my entire life. And just seeing him in the, or in the driver's seat, that's what I want to be someday. I want to be the, half the guy that he is now.
When it became apparent to me that it really was a reality that he was going to be a police officer, I'm still a dad, and you worry about your kids, and you want to make sure that they're always safe. And you, you can't keep them in a box, though.
I know my dad has always said, it's like, we can't tell him what to do with his career. He's gotta make that decision for himself, and I think my mom knows that having him as a role model and somebody I can always look up to and rely on when I'm asking questions and stuff like that, it makes her feel a lot more at ease knowing that I have somebody like that to go to whenever I need help.
So, we got you a couple things just to kind of commemorate today and your service we wanted to give to you from the guys in the yellows here.
Oh, wow. Really cool.
I think at the, at the end of the shift, I'll have some mixed feelings, and I'll be a little bit sad, but I am looking forward to it. It's time to move on. Let the young guys take over, and everybody wants to move up in seniority a little bit, so give them that chance to do that.
So, that brings me to this. I am pleased to introduce our newest recruit, Craig Binie. If you recognize the name, of course, it's because Officer Pat Binie, as you just saw in the video, retired from our agency after approximately 31 years of law enforcement to the city. Craig attended and graduated from Hartford Union High School. He's a local boy. Following his graduation, Craig attended Waukesha County Technical College and enrolled in police science. While in school, Craig was employed by our agency as a police aide, and he also joined the explorers as well. I think they might have been the cadets at that time. They gave, that gave us a close look. The police aide program gives us a close look at anybody who happens to join. We get to see if they're going to be kind of the material that we're looking for as it relates to people that we want to hire or not. And believe me, there's been some people that have gone through that we've chosen not to. We've chosen to take a pass on. Craig was certainly not one of those individuals. Something you should also know about Craig is that he's an Eagle Scout. You've probably seen his Eagle Scout service project and contribution to the community of Hartford over in Jordan Park, the shelter that's over there. Craig was a project manager for that and helped to build that shelter with his dad and several other individuals in the community. When it came time to look for an individual to fill a vacancy for police officer, I could think of no one better than Craig. I watched him work hard and literally, literally grow up over the years to achieve his dreams, and I felt he deserved it. With the approval of the Police and Fire Commission, I appointed Craig as police officer. And so, then I sent Craig back to WCTC, but this time it was for Recruit Academy. He graduated several months later, and upon graduating, and this was cool, he was recognized by his class members by receiving a leadership award. Craig is following a tradition of law enforcement started by his father, and I have every confidence that he will do great things for the city moving forward. Craig?
I state your name.
Aye, Craig Binie.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and comply
That I will support and comply.
With the Constitution of the United States of America.
With the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Wisconsin.
The Constitution and the laws of the State of Wisconsin.
The Charter, laws and ordinances.
The Charter, laws and ordinances.
Of the City of Hartford.
Of the City of Hartford.
The rules and regulations
The rules and regulations.
Of Hartford Police Department.
Of the Hartford Police Department.
And the Law Enforcement Code of Ethics.
And the Law Enforcement Code of Ethics.
And that I will faithfully and impartially
And that I will faithfully and impartially
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties.
Of my office
Of my office.
As law enforcement officer
As law enforcement officer.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
I know normally you come up and shake Everybody's hand on the, on the dais here. If you...
We have one thing in between that.
Oh. There you go.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
You did a great job.
Congratulations, man.
Congratulations.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, under the mayor's report, we have the mayoral apartment of Todd Rosniak. The Park and Recreation Board would look for a motion to approve. We have Elder Person Sikora, seconded by Elder Person Kohler.
Motion by Elder Person Sikora, seconded by Elder Person Kohler, appointing Todd Rosniak to the Parks and Recreation Board.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carried. Thank you. At this time, we'll do aldermanic requests. President Haggy.
Congratulations to both Officers Binie. Look forward to the new officer, and thanks to the old officer. Tomorrow morning, the Hartford Area Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors will be meeting at Forte Bank and just discussing the ongoing summer events, mostly the Thursday night and Saturday farmers markets. That's all that I have tonight.
Thank you. Elder Person Rosniak.
Well, congratulations, Pat Binie. Congratulations and welcome. Eric Binie, may I say it, guys? Eric, I hope I never see your flashing lights in my rearview mirror. I had to get that out.
Okay, Elder Person Carroll.
Just congratulations to the Binie family. Thank you.
You bet. Elder Person Garza.
Again, congratulations, and we look forward to a new Binie in the police force. Thank you.
Thank you. Elder Person Turchi.
The same. Congratulations to the family.
Elder Person Sikora.
Yeah, thank you, and I'll hopefully get another 31 years out of this.
Elder Person Kohler.
I just want to, again, I'll be the same one, I'm gonna thank both Pat and Craig. Our, our history goes back a long way through scouts and some of the day camps and the camping outings and stuff like that. Spending the time with, with that family, I know, I know Pat gave everything he could to the city. Thank you, Pat, very much. And Craig, I know you will do as well, if maybe not better, than Dad, since you can, since you got a good role model following you. So, wish you guys both the luck, and Pam, your worries are never over, are they? But congratulations, guys. I'm so proud of you. Great family.
Thank you. Elder Person Webb.
Congratulations to the Binies, and as a fellow Eagle Scout, I'm very excited that we have an officer that's an Eagle Scout, so.
Elder Person Philip.
Well, I'm kind of partial to the Binie family in general and your cousins as well. So, congrats to both of you. Craig, welcome, and I'm certain you'll do a great job, just like your father.
Thank you very much. We go past the standing committee reports, go to resolutions, possible action there, and a resolution number 3630, a resolution approving a 2021 wastewater treatment plant compliance maintenance annual report, and we have with us the director of that area, one Dave Paquette.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wisconsin Administrative Code 208 requires that we submit this report along with a resolution from the city's governing body to the Department of Natural Resources by June 30th of each calendar year. What the report numbers and grades stand for and mean to the city council and utility are the overall condition of the plant and sewage collection system and its ability to treat its waste without needing a costly upgrade or expansion. Hartford's treatment facility remains in full regulatory compliance for the 2021 reporting year, finishing in the A-grade range with no further action required other than approval of this resolution by council.
Thank you very much. Everybody have a chance to read it? Ribbiting. Fascinating, man. I tell you, it's a real page turner.
You did a nice job. Good number, thank you.
So, we'll look for a motion. Motion by Elder Person Sikora, seconded by Elder Person Philip.
Motion by Elder Person Sikora, seconded by Elder Person Philip for the adoption of proposed Resolution 3630.
Any further discussion? Yes, President Haggy.
Just a comment. We reviewed it at a utility meeting, probably in quite a bit more depth than what we did just now, but the treatment plant is running very efficiently, so we're in good shape for a long time, and thanks to Dave.
Well, thanks to my staff. I have a great staff down there.
Very good.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carried. Thank you. To that we go, yes, please.
Did we do citizen comment period?
There's any citizens here. Oh.
Did we miss that portion as we?
As we careened through the, yes, absolutely. Well, better late than never. Anyone wishing to come up and discuss or actually get their three glorious minutes at the microphone, please feel free to do so. Just state your name and address for citizen comments, name and address. Going once, going twice, going three times, and this delay was due to Elder Person Turchi.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. And with that, the city administrator's report, City Administrator Steve Vort.
The first item on the agenda is regarding an agreement with the Washington, with Washington County. That has to do with the Washington County Executive had contacted us shortly after West Bend had decided that they were not going to be opening their pool because of a lack of lifeguards. I believe they have 24 lifeguards that they need to properly patrol that pond, and unfortunately, they had four apply. And so, they have, they were looking at options. They were looking to do for 2022, which was including such ideas as filling it to a waiting area of three feet or simply closing the pool altogether and not have any swimming. Anyways, right after that happened, we were contacted by Josh, and we talked about where we felt we needed to get to get our pool staff up to the level that we want. Currently, we are about six lifeguards short of a full group. We went from, last year we went from $10, or this year we went from $10 to $11 in pay, so an additional dollar per hour, no matter where they were as, as far as they, their past experience. So, no matter where they were, they went up an additional dollar, and that was across the board. And again, unfortunately, we're still six guards short. Most of the guards that we have are younger, 14, 15, 16 years old, 15 for guards, but, and 16 years old. That really puts us at a, at a tough position in which we're looking to get older individuals, high school juniors, seniors, college freshmen, sophomore, to come back to the pool and help us, guide us through a very expected, busy year. The situation is, is that upon their request, we reviewed where we felt we needed to get to, again, be able to not only maintain the lifeguards that we have and staff that we have, but also to be able to get some additional ones yet this year. So, we came up with a dollar figure as to what it would cost, our total cost, to add additional money to our budget. The total figure came up to being just around $65,000 for the 90-day season. Upon us talking about it, the situation is we not only have the outdoor pool, the Veterans Memorial Aquatic Center that saw over 1,000 people today, but we also have the indoor aquatic center, the Signacast Aquatic Center located inside the rec center. So, we said if it's going to be done for the lifeguards outside, it has to be done for the lifeguards inside for the rest of the year. And then we said, but this can't be a one, one and done situation, so we need to look at this over a five-year term period, which is how long they have to spend their funding mechanism, which they're going to use for this, which is ARPA funding. So, we proposed an idea in which the first year in 2022, they would pay for the entire amount of increase, that's $65,000, or $63,000, excuse me. Then the second year, we, they pay 20, they pay 80%, then 60%, 40%, 20%, and zero. The reason we feathered this back is simply because we knew sooner or later we're gonna have to take this on as a levy. To do it in a very little bit increments over the next five years would make it much more digestible to our expenditure restraint program. So, that's why we presented the idea of, again, feathering it back, which means $12,418 we put onto the tax levy next year in 2023 to support this move, and then additional. Now, keep in mind, we are still wide open for the idea of simply making this money up through a slight increase in daily fees and season passes, and we're gonna continue to look at that as it comes. If it's an additional quarter or 50 cents to, to make up the difference, I think it's very justifiable. So anyways, to get into this agreement right now, we're very conservative in what we're presenting. The dollar figure, again, you'll see on that executive summary. And again, worst case scenario, if we literally did put this all on the tax roll, in 2027, you're looking at $63,000 more, which would have a tax increase of about 4 cents on the mill rate if, again, we'd never raised the cost to go to the pool. So, again, obviously, we'll look at that. By the way, just for informational sakes, we did just recently increase the cost to go to the pool in 2021. So, anyways, we, we do have a history, not a history, but we, we have in the past raised fees, so. And, and obviously, based on today's results, it did not hurt us. The line was out the door, down to Main Street, all the way down to Monroe Street and around the corner. So, truly, we're lined up around the corner. So, our presentation is that we get into an agreement with Washington County. It's kind of a two-part agreement. The first part is they will pay the difference of a $3 raise across the board to all of our staff. That includes all lifeguards, lifeguards with, headguards with WSI, lifeguards with WSI, all swim instructors, and all managers would receive a $3 raise effective this current pay period, which started this past, this past weekend. So, again, that is what we are, are presenting. Again, Washington County is picking up the total cost of the difference. Again, we're estimating what that cost is gonna be, depending upon overtime and everything else. The second part of this is that they are also asked if that we could, they could, we could help them, as we are the only pool or swimming pond available in Washington County. Now, you can also go to the indoor aquatic center located inside the YMCA in West Bend, but besides that, we are the only ones available. And so, they are asking the ability to sell or to give away passes that would bring any Washington County resident in as a Hartford resident for this year only. They will reimburse us for everyone that uses it. We don't have to prove at the gate. Are you sure you're a Washington County resident? Do you have proof of that? Are you sure the kids that you got 14 behind you are all yours? I didn't look at Kyle for any reason in particular, but anyways, the, the situation is such that, again, they will reimburse us for all those based on the actual cost of the addition. So, the agreement that we're getting into them is to ply again. One is they are asking us to increase our wages to hopefully, again, draw more lifeguards and maintain them for next year. And second of all, to, again, allow them the opportunity to give away passes, which will be given away with their July newsletter that goes out to all Washington County residents. There'll be a coupon in there for the, the pass, so to speak. So, any questions? Yes, Dennis?
So, this from Washington County, that would be covered for the non-residents at the non-resident rate? That's what they'll reimburse us?
So, well, it's a resident fee, so, yeah, so, no, it'll be, it'll be covered by them for the difference between resident rate and non-resident.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
So, they, so they buy the resident, they pay the resident rate, and we, and we give them the, we give them the pass, and then the Washington County...
Yeah, so they give us a coupon, and then, and it's almost like them saying, this is proof that I live in Hartford, even though they don't.
The only thing I would say too on that one, though, is, you know, it would be in the only pool and looking at the weather we have today and being short-staffed right now out there at the pool, some not everything is open, and we also gotta look at capacity. Just think about that. I am, I'm not opposed to the idea. I think it's great. We're getting some help with the, we're getting some help with the, with some fees. I think it's a, that's a win-win. We just gotta be careful with the, you know, maxing out the pool.
And, and you're, you're dead on in the fact that there's definitely gonna come days, maybe tomorrow, in which we're at capacity and we have to turn people away.
Yeah, and they may be Hartford residents.
Yeah.
Well, that's one of the things. See, when you and I talked with Josh, one of the things we brought up was to allow Hartford residents a half an hour, you know, if we open the pool at 1:00, at 12:30 to 1:00, Hartford residents would have a, are we going to be doing that? I didn't see that in here.
We are not doing that, and the reason, because the staff termed, deemed that it, it would not work in congestion at the, at the front counter. And so, and it was such a hassle. Well, are, you know, are you resident or non-resident? Well, then you gotta wait, and then it was, it was a big hassle. So, they said it wouldn't work for this situation. And really, we didn't, while we had it in place for COVID, 2020, 2020, 2019, 2020, I think it was, or 2021, it didn't work for then either. I mean, it was just, it made it a bigger problem at the counter, so.
Okay.
Yes, Wayne?
I think it's a great idea, but I read in the paper this afternoon, our local newspaper, that there's a thought of busing
Yeah, that's wrong.
From West Bend or Kiwaskam?
No, that's, that's wrong. They, Washington County called me right away this morning. They said, did you read the paper? I said, of course not. And they said, isn't it, there's talking about busing from other communities? And I said, and I said, you, you don't want to get into busing? She goes, no. I said, well, then, we're all good.
The problem is capacity. I mean, once you reach capacity, they bring two busloads of kids from West Bend or Kiwaskam, you turn them away.
That's, that's not to say that it won't happen. Trust me, it happens every year. We get busloads of kids from Milwaukee, from Waukesha to, Waukesha, by the way, I'm told is down to two, or no, down to one pool in Waukesha County.
That's why we gotta get Hartford residents priority.
So.
Yeah, Hartford kids need priority over everybody else.
Yes, Jeff?
Question on the $3. Do we, how did we come up with $3, and how are we gonna get the six extra individuals?
A $3 raise you're talking about?
Yeah, a $3 raise, and so, what's the plan?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the situation is, is that we have had some individuals apply for jobs and then decide not to take them after we've given them the job, because they can get 1450 working someplace else. And I don't, it could have been that, you know, any place could pay 1450 if the kid is right. So, yeah, so they felt that 1450 was kind of, or $14 was kind of the magic number to, to bring them at and be able to keep them. So, now, next year, again, they would get an additional, you know, 25 cents. Now, the other thing too is, and I, and I addressed that in here too, is the fact of, so, we're the only ones taking up, them up on the deal. It was, it came very, very late, on the, in the 11th hour at the very late, at the very earliest. And West Bend, again, had already made the decision. Kiwaskam had already made their decision months before they, before West Bend did. But anyways, so next year, they're probably going to take them up on this with the opportunity to open up Rednear Park. They just had a, you know, a couple million dollars and a brand-new pool house, and now they, they're, it's gonna be closed. So, I'm guessing next year, they'll probably take them up on this. However, West Bend was offering starting wage 15 bucks an hour this year. It's still only got four people. So, if they go to 20 bucks an hour, well, we're gonna have to readjust how much they're reimbursing us next year to get our employees a little higher up than 14 bucks an hour. Yeah.
By then, gas will be $12 a gallon, so we won't have to worry about people from Hartford going up to West Bend to put the lifeguard.
People in West Bend coming here.
Yeah, so.
Yes.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know if that's really been the big, I know when we had the pond, Slinger Pond, there was some of that cheering with the lifeguards and stuff like that, but I don't know how much of that's going on. There's a lot of, this is, this is a nationwide problem. There's a lot of, this is, this is a nationwide problem. And it all stemmed back from, and I've listened, I was listening to news a couple weeks last week when I was actually in New England. And some of the, some of those pools, they're down in Georgia and also as well in California and stuff like that, some of them are paying $1,200 and $2,500 bonuses for lifeguards to come in. You know, a lot of this started was when the pandemic hit, a lot of pools closed, a lot of pools didn't open, people lost certification. Now, to get your certification, you have to pay for that. I know the rec center, we've worked a program into that to help, to help these young people get their certifications or pay them back for it. But then, you know, but then when you turn around and you start, you take that, you have to get your certification, or you go work at a couple of facilities, you know, that are paying the 15, the 16, $17 an hour, why would you want to, why do you want to go out and do all that? So that's really, it's a huge, it's a huge problem that the nation's facing, not just here in Wisconsin, so.
And it even hurts more if you're, as they call it, you're guarding in dark water versus clear water.
Yeah, absolutely.
Pools have an advantage. I've worked at two aquatic centers and two ponds. And, I mean, unfortunately, West Bend suffered two drownings in the last five years, and kids don't want to deal with that kind of thing, so.
Yeah, it's definitely a nationwide problem.
Yes, Wayne.
We used to always pay lifeguards $10 an hour. Now we're up to $11 an hour, and we never had to worry about that because there wasn't much competition out there. Right now, everybody's hiring at 14, 15, $16 an hour. So that's the dilemma that's facing us right now. So I guess it's time, you know, the labor market caught up to us and the wage market caught up to us. Even $11 an hour for lifeguards, not a lot of money.
Mayor.
One of the things that we had, again, in our discussions when we were talking to Josh, and I think it was very prevalent, that just the type of people or the type of youth that we have here in Hartford, I think it's very telling, in a good way, that we had more people hired than these other communities had apply. And I'm talking in total. When you figure that, and that type of service orientation, service before self, is really part of what Hartford is. And I think that this really shines through as to the fact that we could just about staff the whole thing at the 11. My great fear was that what was going to happen over time is they're going to be working for $11 an hour. And Joe, you and I talked about this a little bit. And, you know, a month from now, you know, they're going to see all their buddies, you know, earning the 14, 15, $16 an hour at all these places that are hiring and putting signs up, stuffing it in your bag when you go through the restaurant, all of this. And the problem is, is that those places keep hiring. And so mine isn't as much the fear of what we're going to start with, it's what we're going to end with, because we can lose those young lifeguards or even some of the older lifeguards over the span of the summer, because there is that risk. Remember, when it's raining or a thunderstorm, you don't get paid, they close the pool. Okay, that doesn't happen in the restaurants that are hiring. So I was actually, I mean, one of the few times that, you know, I was, well, not really on record, we were in, you know, just meetings, but I was saying that, you know, if we have to go higher than that, we should. And I think we have to keep an open mind that although I don't necessarily know what would happen this year, I mean, that might be something we have to address. Obviously, we have, you know, what I call, you know, an eight-and-a-half-million-dollar concrete hole to pay for. Okay? That bill doesn't go away just because of the fact that we can't get lifeguards. And we are going to be in a position where we can make money this year because we're going to be aiding, you know, all of Washington County. We're going to be helping them out. We're going to be the only municipal swimming area of any size open, and there are a lot of people that are going to be wanting to use it. I think it's a wonderful opportunity to introduce a lot of people to the Veterans Aquatic Center here in Hartford that had never been here before. And I think we're going to be able to do it with the county's help because we're helping the county. When I say the county, I don't necessarily mean the government. I mean the county as in all the citizens of Washington County. This gives us a real opportunity to help them. And the one question, Steve, I have for you is the fact that you did put in here kind of a mechanism of raising the levy over time. I just want to make sure that if this council is moving forward with that, we are in no way, shape, or form locking ourselves into that. What you're suggesting is just, this would be one way. Like you said, there are also other things like we can do, like slowly raise rates if we have to and see what the market will bear. But we're not in any way obligating ourselves to raise tax rates over time for this without a further discussion or a further looksee as to how things are going to be moving forward. We don't know what the county's going to do. We don't know next year what these other pools are going to be doing and if we're going to be asked for additional help from the county. And I don't want to be in a position where we're hamstringing ourselves from an increase in taxes. I mean, we're open to it if we have to, but this, from my perspective, is not the way or the venue moving forward that we would lock ourselves in.
If you want to comment on that, conservatively speaking, you are locking yourself in, but we'll do everything we can. And remember, this is just the expenditure budget. Remember, last year, we did not spend any money because we made a profit more than we, we profited more than we expect. So, but to budget it, you'd have to at least set yourself up so that the expense is there. And then if the revenue so happened, if you decide to increase, again, your costs by 50 cents a dollar or whatever it is, great, you can budget that. And then, yes, you can, you can say I'm not putting tax, additional tax dollars into or increasing taxes for it, but in reality, you are, because the bottom line is, is your risk factor just now went up if you go increase expenses but don't increase your revenues.
I understand that, but we also have a very large fund that is more than we need to maintain our bond rating. So we have flexibility here. I would encourage, if we are locking ourselves in, my thing then would be to take, you know, any one of you that wants to modify this and say that that is just a suggestion rather than locking yourselves in. From my perspective is that would be very foolish because we don't know what the future brings. We can always set ourselves up to raise taxes, to do it this early, and doing it, I think, is foolish, in my personal opinion. So you guys, you're the ones doing it. I'm running the meeting, but you're the one with the votes. So go ahead, Alder Person Turchi. Or I'm sorry, this is still your show until you hand it back.
Yeah, I'm not really keen on locking ourselves into an increase of the levy. I'm for the concept of getting assistance from the county, but at this point, I'm not in favor at all of locking ourselves into the levy.
Well, and again, I want to repeat what I said before, is I've been a part of organizations, communities, in which they said, oh, we never knew that was going to cost us more money. Oh, we were never told that this was going to be more on the tax rate. No, it can't happen because we were never told this. I'm telling you now, if you increase your expenses, but you don't increase your revenues or your revenues don't match what you budget for or increase to, you're going to basically take more out of your, out of levy. And that can be reserved levy, but it's, you're going to have more in levy.
Well, I agree 100%. You increase expenses, the revenue has to come from somewhere. I've always been a big, in favor of, if it costs you more to run the pool, maybe you should charge more to be in the pool.
Sure.
Okay, so I'll go on the record for that, because if everything's going to cost more, it's got to come from somewhere.
Yeah.
Right? So, I mean, I'm not into, interested in locking in the levy right now. I'm more interested in saying, what's the operational cost of the pool? What's the expected operational cost of the pool going forward? And what do rates have to be for us not to increase the levy because of it? That's what I'm for. And if that works out, that's great. And if we have to raise levy, then we'll deal with it at that point in time. But I would say that we have to look at all of it and not lock ourselves in.
Sorry, Alder Person Hagie.
Yeah, the last sentence here on item 10, assuming we don't have another increase in entry costs, the estimated increase to the tax rate would be. So I think that covers it.
Yeah.
We're not locking it in, we're just saying it's estimated.
You've been put on notice of a decision of increasing expenses is just as like saying, I'm interested in raising taxes unless we can offset the revenues and the revenues match the budget. So Alder Person Color.
I had two things. One thing, you know, we, back in 2020, when we opened the pool, as a group, we went out and said, we were willing to pay an extra $85,000 to keep that pool open, to pay the difference of what we thought we'd get for, for the income to what the difference was. I know that was a one-time good deal, but we, luckily, they came through and we, they were very, Mike, Mike Kerman and his team came up with some great, great options. They came up with some good things. And if you remember correctly, nowhere did we come near the cost that we, that we gave them to go ahead and exceed their budget for. So, you know, that's one thing that, you know, we have to keep that in mind. There's a lot of different ways to make up the difference. We were willing to take it out of the general fund that one year, but maybe that's probably not the direction we want to go year over year, but we have to, we have to balance the budget. But the other thing I will state is, unfortunately, lifeguards aren't the only ones in the city that are not being paid at the levels. As I plead, and you guys read it in the minutes last week or last, last meeting, we're still sitting with openings in the park and rec that we're not getting yards mode, we're not getting, you know, stuff done because, because of the pay. And some of the people are, these kids are going, these people are going, these college students are going places that are getting paid more. So this is something, I think, not only is it, is it a pool issue and, you know, a lifeguard issue, this is something the city's going to have to address strongly in the future, in probably in this next budget session, what we're going to, what do we need to do? Where is the, where is the competitive wages at? Because right now, there's, they're not, unfortunately. So keep that in mind.
And to add to that, Joe, you know, this year alone, we increased our full-time seasonal park and rec and public works employees and our intern for engineering. And I know the other two, the first two were up from 11 to 14 bucks. So, I mean, they're in line with what these lifeguards are getting, but even $14, I mean, it was.
Well, that was taken, if I remember correctly, wasn't it, taken a couple, taken the number of positions and eliminating one so we could tether that across the budget?
Well, that's how we made it work in the budget, but that was not, that was not our goal by any stretch of imagination.
And we still have openings.
What's that?
And we still have openings, correct?
Yeah, parks has at least one or two, building maintenance has at least one or two. Yeah.
Kyle.
Two parts. Are we going to contact the lifeguards that passed unemployment? And if they aren't hired and we can't fire anyone else, are these funding percentages, can they be rolled over to next year if we're not actually hiring anybody and using these funds?
I mean, we have a, we have a set budget, operational budget for the aquatic center. And if we don't use some of it, some of it may be swallowed up by overtime because some people may be working more. But it's just the fact of we lose less money. We lose, we budget to lose about $30,000 to $40,000 every year, okay? Which, by the way, is very modest. I've been a part of aquatic centers that lost $1,000 a day for 90 days, 90,000 bucks, community of 3,500. But with that, it just means that we lose less if we have money left over. So, yeah. Yes, Alder Person Webb.
So are we locking ourselves in all the way through, like, 2027 in this agreement? Or could we, because right now, the way I read this, we're not increasing the tax levy for this year, and it would be a cent next year. Like, could we come back next year and say, we don't want to do this, we need to increase rates before we would actually?
Absolutely. I mean, that's, I'm just simply saying, if you do, if you do nothing with your revenue portion of this equation, your expense equation is going up at a rate of about a penny on the mill rate. Yes, Alder Person.
Steve, we increased rates this year for daily passes and seasonal passes, right?
We have this, we have the current rates already set, yes.
Did we increase rates last year?
That's when we increased them, with the 2021.
We, we did, yeah.
What I'm getting at is, every year, we could increase those rates and maybe not have to worry about this levy increase.
Now, and that's what we're looking at. I mean, we'll look at 2021 numbers as far as attendance goes, our total revenues. We'll look at 2022 after this year, and then we'll, from there, be able to have a better understanding of how much we think the attendance is, where the, the different age groups. So we have three age groups, children, adults, seniors. And anyways, so the, we'll take a look at that and determine, okay, divide, divide that off by the $12,000 we need to come up with for next year. And we'll present that idea at the park and rec.
Our dealer rates have always been a pretty good bargain out there. They really have for daily pass. Even seasonal pass is better yet, better bargain yet.
Yep.
So I think users and citizens would almost expect a rate increase every year along the line. And that way, you're not affecting the tax levy if it balances out.
Yes.
Just for clarification, when I asked you, because I read, obviously, what President Hagie read as far as the verbiage of what it said, but then I asked you specifically, I said, does this lock it in? Your response was, well, yeah. Well, that's what, so what you're saying is, is it locks us into a, an understanding that we have to balance it. It does not lock us in, now as you're saying, to the actual increase in the levy. I wanted to have, I wanted to hear from you what you thought that meant.
Yeah, so it's, it's the expense is locked, if the expense is locked in.
Okay, the expense is, but not the methodology to provide the funds.
But again, unless you agree to the idea of increasing your rates every year.
Okay.
It is.
Okay.
Yes.
So the mechanism to increase rates comes from that committee?
It starts with the park and rec committee, and then, remember, every year, you guys approve of the laundry list of rates for every different thing? So that's a part of that.
So we have the final say.
We have the final say.
Yes.
Goodbye me, then.
Sure. Joe?
Yeah, I guess I'm with Jeff and Joe on this. I just want to get clarity on what differential we're talking about. Did we run the exercise on the amount of tenants that we had in 2021 and what that rate would anticipate looking like if we were just dealing with raising the rate to accommodate the pay for the individuals to $14 and $15?
We did not.
Okay.
I mean, we literally pulled this together Wednesday morning before it went on in the budget, so.
Understood. And then my other comment to what Joe brought up, and that, my brain was thinking about that as well, is how does this impact the other parts of your organization with respect to future? Because, you know, the economy is what it is, but how are we hedging that? And I know we don't want to raise taxes, and everyone says, hey, we're going to raise taxes. I'd get flogged here because, you know, we've been in an operating mode that says we're not changing levy, but I think we need to have a realization and an understanding of how that impacts the city based on what we're going to do forward, if we're going to sacrifice services because we're taking a hard stance on that ethic that we've done in the past 10 years, right? So those are my thoughts.
Yeah, and again, we'll definitely continue to have to look at, again, those, these openings and why we can't find additional people to fill them. It's no doubt a problem. And it's burning out people. I mean, I had one staff member who left and said, one of the major reasons they were leaving is because hiring part-time staff right now is absolutely impossible. So. Yes.
Are we looking at extending the times for the pool at all, opening early, maybe going a little later?
You do understand what it means to open pools earlier?
Yeah.
That means additional staff, and that's our problem. So the bottom line is, is that at this point in time right now, we are not, however, I mean, if we continue to have 90-degree days the rest of the summer, I'm sure we'll look at it, yeah.
Okay. The reason why I ask is to see if you did have additional employees, lifeguards.
Yeah.
Would that be then a consideration with the amount of people that are going to be pouring in?
Absolutely.
If you had them.
Yeah, and we have in the past, if you remember the last couple of years, I, as long as I've been here, I've been here as long as the pool has. But it's a situation where, when it got to be extremely hot like today, we did leave it open for a couple more hours a night, just to give everybody a little relief. Joe?
And just for clarification, at the pool, it's, we're open every day. It's just with the staffing that we have, you have to, there might be some areas that may not be open because of staffing requirements, but the pool itself will be open.
Yeah, so we may have the water walk is closed, we may have, the lazy river might have to close because the slide for the lazy river has to close, the other slide might have to close. And those are our top three in order of what we close first and then go from there.
So with the additional staff, we could have basically the whole pool open and go from there.
Yeah.
I think raising the fees would help in that, a little more than trying to, you know, raise the, raise the levy.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's, that's where I'm looking at right now. I didn't like the fact of bringing in more tax money because that, that never ends. And I want this to, you know, kind of work its way out through fees, see if that works out. If it doesn't, then we can start looking at, at taxes.
Any other questions? Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so we've had a thorough discussion. I think there's a full understanding that this is open, so would look for a motion.
I want to recede myself from the, the vote since I have a.
Because Joe's a lifeguard, he's accusing himself, the chair does accept that, okay. Elder Person Phillips, President Hagie second.
Motion by Elder Person Phillips, seconded by Elder Person Hagie approving a proposal from Washington County addressing lifeguard shortages.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those no. Motion carried, super. Okay, next, Steve.
Yeah, the next item has to do with a legal issue and so thus we brought our city attorney in. A discussion and consideration of approval to seek abatement of a public nuisance by court action for a property located at one oh nine West Washington Avenue. And Ian is here to talk more about that.
So it's. I'd like to raise one question, just, just under, is there a reason, because I was actually, is there a reason, this isn't in a closed session or is, we, no reason to? Just want to make sure.
No, yeah, yeah.
Not, not with this one.
It wouldn't fit any of the restrictions.
Just wanted that on record. Thank you, go ahead.
It's been a while since we've had to come for one of these. The, the previous time when we had a closed session regarding it, there was specific legal strategies regarding why we weren't acting at the time that we didn't want to discuss an open session. That's why we had a closed session regarding some of those previous raise orders. This property is a well-known property, it's been a nuisance in the city for many, many, many years. Typically, when we have a nuisance property as opposed to a property that's so dilapidated that it needs to be raised, we try to address those issues with citations first. The goal of the citations isn't to rack up fees, it's to kind of give the hammer so that, you know, now we have the carrot and you can get out of the tickets if you fix the problem. Otherwise, we're going to come down with the stick and give you the citations, right? So you have the two options. In this case, that has failed. So there were numerous citations that were issued, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Those were, went to court, there was a stipulation that if a permit was pulled in the property, the, the garage in question was taken down, they would be dismissed. That never happened. A permit was pulled, but no action was ever taken on it for the last two years. So in discussions with Justin Drew and with Tim Algiers regarding further enforcement, the recommendation is to move forward with court action to either have an order, well, it would start with an order for the property owner to abate the nuisance themselves. If they fail to do that, then we would obtain a court order to go in and abate it as a city and then charge those costs back to the property owner. Yeah, you have the pictures? Steve's going to put the pictures up of the property in question. So as you can see, it's a garage that's falling in on itself. There's also a question and there has been prior issues with car parts and other debris in the yard, so we would do an inspection as well and abate both nuisances at the same time. There's no point in going in for one and not taking care of both. Because this involves court action and it involves, you know, essentially going after a property owner and taking that next step, we always come to counsel prior to taking that step just to receive authorization, both to spend the money, because again, as in the last discussion, by starting down this process, we are essentially acknowledging that this may come to a point where I come to you three, six months from now saying, hey, we need a contract to raise this garage. So that, that is a quite possible outcome, given the circumstances, that we will be coming down the pipeline with the actual, an actual contract to abate it as the city and then charge it back to the property owner. Those costs do get charged back to the property owner. As I'm sure some of you are aware, the speed on getting those recouped from the property owner is not necessarily the fastest, but we do have a judgment out there that would take effect either through the tax bill or when they, so something like a tax deed or when they sell the property. One, one other comment first. The good news with this one is the, the issue is with a garage, not with the residence itself. So unlike the raise order that we did for the house that was dilapidated, where we now have a vacant lot, at the end of the day, there will be a lot with a house on it that still is marketable versus just vacant property where somebody may not ever want to build, so. Mayor.
Thank you. Just wanted to know, obviously you're saying that this would then be attached to the home, so, so they would have to pay that in order to be able to sell the home. And that might be when we get our money, ten years from now when they sell the home. And I understand that. Is there interest accruing on that or no?
If it's a judgment, it does accrue interest. If it's on the tax bill, it also accrues interest.
Thank you.
Elder Person.
Being that this is a private property and, and, you know, this all comes down through courts that has to get raised, will there be law enforcement to escort the contractors on the property or how's that work?
We would address it as needed. Yeah, I, I mean, I don't, most of the time when we have raise orders, it's not necessary because there's nobody living there. But yeah, as needed, we would deal with it. I, I don't specifically have any reason why, I don't know the reason why this person hasn't complied, whether it's money, whether it's just being cantankerous, I don't know. So.
Elder Person Webb?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like we gave this person a lot of opportunity to fix the property, maybe more than we should have. And so I think we should move forward.
Anyone else? If not, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Would look for a motion to move forward with this. Elder Person Carroll, seconded by Elder Person Phillips.
Motion by Elder Person Carroll, seconded by Elder, Elder Person Phillips to approve to seek abatement of a public nuisance by court action for a property located at one oh nine West Washington Avenue.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those no. Motion carried for adjournment. Elder Person Sakura, Elder Person Phillips.
Motion by Elder Person Sakura, seconded by Elder Person Phillips for adjournment at seven fifty-seven.
All those in favor for adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those no. Stand adjourned, thank you.